Good evening. Welcome to the May 25th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. Those of you that are with us in the audience, we're glad to have you and we're glad to have those that are watching on television at home. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we have two of our principals, Ms. Maria Johnson, Principal of Scales Elementary, and also Ms. Emily Spencer, Principal at Erma Siegel, to lead us in our pledge, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, board members, you have received a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
To the opposition, and there is none. Thank you. All right, communications.
All right. Yes, good evening, board. I am so excited in our communications tonight to introduce you in person to our new principals that will be joining the team here in Murfreesboro City. So I want to ask our four new principals to make their way up to the podium, if that's all right, and I'll do a quick introduction. I'm going to start with Ms. Sia Phillips. Ms. Sia Phillips took over as the interim principal at Salem Elementary in March when I assumed my new duties. She has served as the assistant principal in the building since its opening in 2019 and has played a central role in the school's success since day one. In addition to previously serving as assistant principal at Discovery and Reeves Rogers, Ms. Phillips has an extensive background working with children and teachers as an academic coach, an ESL teacher, a classroom teacher. She has already gained the respect of the faculty, the parents, and the student body at Salem, and she is deeply aware of the school culture and needs of the community, and I know she will do great things. So welcome, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Duke, for that kind introduction, and thank you all for trusting me to lead Salem. I'm excited about the work ahead of us as we continue to live out our mission and vision at Salem Elementary, and thank you all because we couldn't do this without your support. And at Salem, we like to start our day by saying it's definitely a great day to be a Salem Saint, and you have an open invitation to come and see what that is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next new principal is Dr. Victoria Shields. She comes to us with over 10 years of administrative experience. Dr. Shields is a Murfreesboro resident, and she is thrilled to be bringing her experience of leading schools to our own community where she lives. She has a proven record of school improvement, and I will say every person I spoke with when I talked, when I called about Ms. Shields, talked about her focus, her dedication to student-centered leadership, and it were very complimentary of her. And in one of her introductory emails, she wrote something to me, and it really resonated with me, and when I read this, I knew she was someone we definitely wanted to talk to. She said, "We cannot be afraid of failure or taking risk, but instead become focused on the outcomes by aligning our supports, equipping leaders, and eliminating barriers to education." So welcome to Murfreesboro City, Dr. Shields.
Thank you, thank you so much. Dr. Duke and board members, please know, this is such an awesome experience for me. I am truly humbled and excited. Thank you so much. I trust I will do my best. I have had the opportunity to go into Mitchell Nelson already and spend the day with the staff. They are awesome. Let me just say that. And so, just as you read, Dr. Duke, I am so very focused on instruction and moving the needle, and I know that with the help of the team, we will do just that. I am truly excited and again, very humbled. You guys have a great evening, and thank you so very much.
Another familiar face here is Ms. Natalie Hardeman. She is the current assistant principal at Reeves Rogers and will be joining us as principal. She has an extensive background here in Murfreesboro City. She started as assistant principal in our district since 2015 at Scales, at John Pittard, at Discovery, and now at Reeves. She has been selected as Teacher of the Year by both her school faculty and MEA. She's also served as MEA President. And Ms. Hardeman is an enthusiastic leader with a wealth of experience across our district. She has a keen understanding of the needs of the students and staff at Reeves Rogers, and she is excellently, excellently poised to continue the great things that have been happening at Reeves. We're so excited to welcome you, Ms. Hardeman.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. That makes me sound really nice. I just want to say I'm so grateful for this opportunity to be able to continue to lead at Reeves. We are on such an upward trend at Reeves Rogers, and I cannot wait to continue it. Thank you, thank you for your future support, and I look forward to working with you.
Finally, I'm thrilled to introduce our new principal at Northfield, Ms. Yanisha Campbell. Has been serving as the principal of Ketchnell Elementary for the past six years. Prior to moving to the county system to serve as an assistant principal back in 2008, she was a Murfreesboro City Schools teacher, and we are thrilled to welcome her back home. Ms. Campbell comes to us with a depth of experience and training. She is known for her energy, her passion for student learning, and her family-centered staff development style. That's led Ketchnell to Tennessee Reward School status, as well as lowering their chronic absenteeism rate by 50% for two years in a row. So I know she will be the perfect fit to lead the Northfield community into the future. Welcome, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Duke and Murfreesboro City School Board. I just want to let you know how excited and how honored I am to be chosen the principal of Northfield Elementary. You had many choices, but you chose me, and I really appreciate that. Just so you know, I know that Murfreesboro City Schools is a system where it's like where kids come first, and I will absolutely do that for you. I'm excited to be a part of Murfreesboro City Schools, and I'm excited to be a Northfield Knight, and you will not be disappointed.
All right.
Like you see, we have four fantastic new principals joining our team, and I just want to personally thank our teachers, our staff members, our fellow principals, our parents who sat on the interview panel. Their input was crucial, and that really led to us getting four excellent leaders for our building. So great things ahead in those schools.
Thank you, and welcome aboard to all four of you.
May I make a comment?
You, Ms. Reddick.
Real quick. I have to congratulate or commend Dr. Duke because the process for choosing principals this time is the best that it's been, and I don't know how long. I mean, I can't even tell you how many years. All the stakeholders that got to participate, because they are the ones that know the school, and you know that. Thank you.
They did a great job. We're very pleased.
Spotlight on education?
All right, thank you again. Our spotlight on education tonight is on Casey Lane Academy, so I'm going to ask the team from Casey Lane Academy to step forward. We are so excited, and tonight, we want to honor and congratulate the faculty and staff of Casey Lane Academy on being named last week as a Tennessee STEM Designated School. Receiving the state STEM school designation is not an easy task, and the fact that they achieved this this year is truly remarkable. This really shows their commitment to ensuring our students have access to STEM programming that meet the needs of the school, that meet the needs of our students as well. Casey Lane becomes one of 61 schools across our state to earn this distinction, and they join overall, Discovery, Erma Siegel, and Bradley as the fifth Murfreesboro City School with this distinction. So I did ask Dr. Buller to come tonight to introduce her leadership team to you all.
Thank you, and as Dr. Duke said, we are incredibly honored to be able to receive this designation for our staff and for our students. It has been a multi-year process to apply, and there have been a lot of work that was done even before that application started. I'm going to introduce our team, and they're going to talk to you just a little bit about that designation process. With me tonight, I have Ms. Sonia Cox, our assistant principal, Ms. Kristi Timberlake, kindergarten teacher. I have Ms. Rachel Matthews, fourth grade teacher, Ms. Tabitha Rodriguez, who is a SED EA, and Ms. Julie Seymour, who is an EA as well and leads our STEAM program across the building. We also have a leadership team back at school that extends all the way from pre-K through sixth grade, and we're just so proud of the work that they've put in. Ms. Kristi Timberlake and Ms. Rachel Matthews are going to speak to you a little bit about that designation process.
Hello, my name is Rachel Matthews, and I teach fourth grade at Casey Lane.
Hi, I'm Kristi Timberlake, I teach kindergarten.
So as you all probably already know, a lot goes into the STEM designation process, and whenever we decided that we were going to attempt it, we first met and we thought, why are we wanting to apply for STEM designation? You know, we wanted to have a strong foundation and a strong why behind all of the work that we were doing. And so, we talked and we decided that we wanted students at Casey Lane Academy to have the same opportunities that they could have at any school in America, and we know that STEM is best for students. And so, we have kind of kept that as our focus and making the best learning opportunities for our students. And we actually kind of looked back at Casey Lane's history to drive some of our STEM initiative that Kristi will talk about.
In 2010, we had a teacher that wrote a grant for our garden area, and we kind of looked at that and thought, well, how can we expand on that? And we also were one of the first farm-to-schools, schools in our district also. So we thought, we're going to carry on that tradition at Casey Lane, and that is what began and drove our STEAM designation process.
Thank you guys for your continued support of our STEAM initiative.
Thank you, and I congratulate you, as I had the honor of being part of the graduation ceremony this morning, and if my math is correct, and this is old-fashioned math, that puts, excuse me, that puts you in the top 3% of all elementary schools in the state of Tennessee, along with five others, and I think that speaks well Yes. for our city school system and our teachers and staff. Thank you very much. All right, board members, you, we need a motion to approve the consent items?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
All right, so move that we approve the consent items.
Thank you, Mr. Settle. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any question or comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
To the opposition, and there is none. Thank you. All right, let's see, we're ready for action items. All right, Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. The first action item that we're looking at tonight is taking a look at our summer school protocols regarding COVID. So I have a small presentation I want to provide to you, if we can get that on the screen, and we will go through that. There we go, all right. So we do want to go through just some information as we begin looking at what our COVID protocols are for the upcoming summer school year. So as you know, the return to school plan was approved by the board back in July for the entire year, and the approval was for the 2020-2021 school year, and it also granted the director of schools approval for revisions as required. So since the 2020-2021 school year ends tomorrow, we are seeking approval of our new COVID protocols specifically for summer school. And I want to emphasize again that these are protocols for the next six-week summer school program. We will address the future fall at a different meeting. So I wanted to give you a couple of metrics to look at. I will say Nurse Walker could not be here with us tonight due to a prior engagement. Nurse Archer is here in her place, and as we have questions after I go through this or during it, I will seek to answer those, and Nurse Archer is here as well to answer those. So there was a couple of questions I wanted to kind of anticipate you may ask, one being is where we are as a county, where we are as a school system as well. So what you have in front of you is it works down from most present all the way back to February is the number of positive cases that we've had in the district. So as you can see, this past week was actually the first week since the beginning of school year that we had no positive staff members or positive students in our district, and you can look and see that those numbers had been pretty consistent, and we've seen a pretty, an insignificant decrease in the last couple of weeks. For Rutherford County, what you have is the percent of the population that actually has active cases. And for this, we went all the way back to January to kind of show where we've been as a district, as a county. So you can see at the beginning of the spring semester, that was kind of at the peak season, if you remember at that point, that's when as a school system, we actually went to a hybrid model doing, with only half the students in at a time, at .98. It did, really since my tenure started back at the beginning of March, it had been consistently around that .27% of the population with active cases, and after 425, they stopped sending week or daily updates to us and was just sending us every once in a while. And the last update we had, we were sitting at, which was yesterday, .087% of the population has an active case currently. So I did reach out and had a great conversation with Ms. Dixon at the Rutherford County Health Department, who continues to be a wonderful resource for us and a great partner for us. And I asked her to send me some information as well, from her standpoint, that I could share with you, and she provided this information. I realize it's a little small, so I'm going to read it to you. She said, "The CDC does recommend the use of two measures when looking at community burden to determine the level of risk. The first is the total number of new cases per 100,000 people in the last seven days, and the second is basically the number of positive tests in the last seven days." She did emphasize that these two measures assess the incidence and spread in the community, in our example, the county, and not the schools themselves. So this is looking at all of Rutherford County. Currently, based on last week's data, we are sitting in the moderate transmission. So that's currently where we are transmission-wise in the county. So that's a little bit of a viewpoint of where we are as a school system, where we are as a county. And I will stop, and before we go into our actual plan, I want to see if there's any questions now that myself or Ms. Archer can answer, or we can wait after the plan as well.
Any questions at the present time?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ballard?
Just, for example, the moderate transmission, does that take into account the age groups?
So that is the county as a whole, so that's all cases.
So that's all ages?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
So in looking at these factors and looking at where we are, we looked at multiple factors when determining our COVID plan. The major things we looked at and considered when we thought about summer school is that we are going to have smaller summer school class sizes, so we are capping that at 1 to 13. We obviously have fewer students participating in summer school compared to the traditional school year. Even though we're very proud of our 1,900 number, that is significantly less than 9,000 we typically serve this year. And of course, we have an increase in the number of fully vaccinated employees working in the district. So when we looked at our COVID plan, there were some major areas that we updated. First was our quarantine guidelines, and that was, of course, based on vaccination status. The CDC, as you are aware, have released new guidelines for quarantine and isolation based on your vaccination status, so all of that has been updated in the plan. We also looked at our transportation protocols that we'll have in place, including loading and unloading of buses, seating assignments, and regularly cleaning and sanitizing the bus. That will remain in place. And then we looked at our sick day testing and return to school guidelines, and we updated that with the Tennessee Health Department. And this graphic, and it looks a little busy, but the more you look at it, the more sense it makes, this really outlines how we'll determine who has to quarantine, who has to get tested, and who can come back to school. And what they have done is they have separated what they consider low-risk symptoms with high-risk symptoms. And so, our school nurses, because we will continue to have nurses at all of our, or serving in summer school, they'll be serving multiple buildings, but they will continue to use this as our main focus from the Health Department of when a child has to leave summer school and when they can come back based on the symptoms they have. And as for adults as well. So face mask, we actually have two options I'm going to present to you tonight, and what we will ask is, as we talk through this in the final approval, that it is approved with one of these face mask options or a different option brought forward by the board. So option one is for our face mask, is that mask will continue to be required when riding the school bus and when inside the school, if six feet of social distance cannot be safely maintained. Masks will be optional when students are outside or when they are inside and socially distanced. Students, of course, are encouraged to wear the mask at any time if that best meets their individual situation. For adults, we are asking or recommending that adults should just adhere to the CDC guidelines based on their specific health situation, which at this time, the CDC guidelines are that fully vaccinated individuals are no longer required to wear a mask or physically distance. However, we are understanding the role we play as educators in schools, and so we did put in there and are recommending that when we're in the presence of students, MCF staff members are encouraged to follow those student protocols that we're asking our students to follow. Mask option number two just simply states that masks will be required when we're riding the bus. However, students are encouraged to wear a mask inside the school building if socially distancing, if social distancing cannot be maintained, but we will not be requiring them at any point. So this puts the, really the onus of it on the parents of what they would like their students to do. For adults, you'll see it's the same. Adults continue to adhere to the CDC guidelines based on their specific health situation, and then when in the presence of students, whatever the policy is, we will follow that policy to model that behavior. And to cover what our current guidelines are, what the CDC is currently recommending is that unvaccinated people wear a mask, that's by people who are two years of age or older, anytime they're in a public setting, anytime they're traveling on a plane, bus, train, or other form of public transportation, when they're around people, they do not live with them, or if they're inside a home and someone lives with them is sick. And of course, the vaccinated protocols we've already covered, that they can resume activities without wearing a mask, without physical distancing, except when required by federal, state, local, tribal, or territorial laws. We are expecting the CDC will update its guidance for schools in the coming weeks to inform the 21-22 school year. That does not give us a lot of help for tonight's discussion, but we are very hopeful that in the next few weeks, we'll have that new guidance from the CDC. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, we are happy to entertain any questions, Ms. Archer or myself, regarding the plan.
All right, so in a nutshell, tell me the difference between the two proposals. One, masks are required, option two, and students are encouraged to wear a mask inside the school, but they're encouraged if they don't have to. In option one, students will wear a mask inside the building, but not necessarily when they're outside.
That's correct, so.
That's basically two points.
Yes, sir. And then, yes, sir. In option one, if they're inside the building and they can't socially distance, they would be required to wear a mask. If option two, it's just optional.
Okay, all right.
Encouraged, but not required.
Okay. Mr. Settle?
Thank you. I want to clarify what social distancing, distancing acceptable distance is. One time it was six feet, and I think now, some of the guidance that I heard, especially for schools, was that it was four feet. What are we considering socially distance?
We are still sticking to the six feet, which we don't, yeah, six feet.
Six feet, thank you. The other question that I had is the population for our summer school. What does it look like per school? How many students are we talking?
So that actually has changed, and Ms. Arnett, I may have to lean on you. I think our largest school is a little over 200. Yeah, so our largest school, I think, is either Salem or overall one of those, and it's right at a little over 200 students.
So our parent, our student to teacher ratio is going to be a little bit better than
One to 13.
One to 13?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Moore, and then we'll go the other end of the table.
And so, just following up on what Mr. Settle said, so if we have 13 students in a classroom, given the size of our classrooms, is it, is it likely that there will be a lot of time in the classroom when kids will be able to be socially distanced and be able to take off their masks indoors?
So, you know, I agree, go back to maybe the hybrid time in January, we really emphasized trying to give students that time to spread out because they're there, and we had less students in the classroom, so we'll obviously be encouraging that, working with that. I will point out, the curriculum at summer school is a little different. So it's a little more game-based, it's a little more group-based, they're going to be doing probably more in collaborative groups than they would do in a traditional school year.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ballard?
Thank you. In the case of both, we're requiring masks on the bus.
That is correct.
And I guess I'm confused by having, we're changing everything but riding on the bus, so let me go back to just say, I appreciate all that you've put into this, and certainly a lot of things to think about, but the option two really comes down to me thinking of parent choice, and just, if we just took it and said, this is going to be parent choice, if they want them on the bus, if they want them on the, in the school building, and choice for the teachers as well, to make their own choice about it, and the staff. So I guess I would be more comfortable with option two if it would just change it to where the parents made the choice on what they wanted to do.
So the intent of option two is that. When we say it's encouraged, is that it would be on the parent to work with their child about what the parent's expectation is for the child during the school day of whether they wear the mask. So option two, with the exception of the bus, is really a parent choice option.
And the buses, is, why is it supported for the bus or recommended for the bus?
When we met as a team to have that conversation, we're looking at a couple of reasons. One, because of the confined space with the circulation of that air in there, as well as the fact at this point, we, as we look at our bus numbers, we know if they're at full capacity on that bus, you have three students sitting very, very closely, much more closer than they would be within a classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. Dr. Duke, as I recall, the La Roche Family Foundation, as well as many other community partners, have provided both funds as well as PPE for our district. Do we have enough masks to be able to distribute to students that may wish to wear masks?
Yes, I think our school nurses would, I think our school nurses would, and principals would say, we have a very healthy supply of PPE.
And would it be correct that we're following the science and the CDC guidelines about socially distancing and masking on the bus?
So we, when we, I'll let Ms. Archer talk specifically about the CDC guidelines, but on the bus, again, knowing that, as I spoke before, they specifically talk about transportation as a time to wear masks. Do you want to add to that, Ms. Archer?
I mean, that's what it is, the CDC recommendation, so that's what.
And that's even for vaccinated people on public transportation to continue to wear masks, and none of our students are old enough to be fully vaccinated at this point.
And to piggyback on, I'm sorry, to piggyback on that, if you've ever been in a school bus, you'd understand why we need to keep them on. They are all over each other. I mean, you know, they're, they can't help it. I mean, that's just what kids do in a bus, so I don't have a problem with just the bus.
All right, you through?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Ms. Barton, do you have a question?
No.
Mr. Settle?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, sir, you're out of order.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Summer school is optional, correct?
That is correct.
None of the parents are required to send their kids to summer school, is that correct?
That is correct.
It is their option to send them to summer school.
That is correct.
The teachers that are teaching, were they forced to teach in summer school?
No, sir.
They all volunteered?
We are paying them, but.
Are you paying them?
We are paying them, I want to be very clear, yes, but they did, they did sign up.
They signed up, okay.
They signed up for the opportunity to be paid.
So those that are going to the summer school program are, it's optional, they don't have to. Also, the other question, I think we've covered it, but I want to hit it a little bit, is that bus transportation is public transportation, correct?
I would say yes.
Okay.
We offer that, yes.
That clears it up for me. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak to the board, please.
Mr. Chairman, I have.
Sorry, sir, you're out of order, you haven't filled out the required information to speak to the board.
I sent an email, you did not respond.
No, sir, I did not get anything from you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
All right, sir.
I move for the adoption of option one, I think is the one that, can you flash it again? Because I don't think it's on my screen, but I think I'm in favor of option one.
Option one requires mask when students cannot socially distance inside the building. Option two is the optional recommended.
Option one is what I'm making a motion for the adoption of.
Second?
Who's second?
That was me.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Well, we have a motion on the floor to adopt option number one. We have a second. Do we have any comment or question? Ms. Barton?
Yeah, I don't think there's enough difference between option two and option one to warrant going with option one. Really, the only difference is, is that they would
Really, the only difference is, is that they would be required to wear it in the classroom with option one if they were less than six feet apart, right? I mean, that's the only difference. So, I, I don't know, maybe, and that may be something a lot of other people feel strongly about, but.
Okay. Ms. Moore?
I think I'm one of those people, Ms. Barton, that does feel strongly about that, because that, just, for me, this whole time, every time we've had to make a decision about this, what has carried the day for me is the current public health guidance, because that's not my area of expertise, so I rely on those, where that is their area of expertise. And currently, the ability to go without a mask, like we're all enjoying tonight, is for fully vaccinated people, and when I think about our student population, we're only elementary students, you know, it's only a few sixth graders at the outset, you know, the edges who could even be vaccinated by the end of the summer. So when I do think about them doing group work or whatever in the classrooms, I would like to see masks, just, just for that, to make sure that we are following the public health guidance for this. But I am glad that it's now optional outside, and that hopefully the population in the classroom is such that, at times, they will be able to be far enough apart to be indoors without the mask as well. It just seems like option one is the most health-based and just reasonable, kind of strikes that balance to me. So that's why I've seconded Mr. Settle's motion.
The thing that I, I try to weigh in my mind when, when thinking about this is, if I were to vote not to wear a mask, and a child were to get sick, I would feel very badly. If I vote to wear a mask and a child gets sick, I've done what I can do, but if I voted against that mask, I haven't, in my opinion, done enough to help protect that child for upcoming events, anyway. Okay, any other, Mr. Ballard?
Well, I'd just like to say that one of the things that I really have, think we missed in this whole mask argument is what we're doing to the children with the mask, because of the social impact of these children not understanding whether someone's smiling at them, whether someone's frowning at, frowning at them, you know, we don't even know the social toll that's going to happen because of this. So, to me, the quicker we can take the mask away, and just, if we have to have it, leave it with the parent to decide, I think all of us would agree that, you know, I find that when we introduced the principals tonight, I was excited to understand that I could smile at those people with approval and agreement, and they could see that, they didn't have to read my face through my eyes, or through my ears, or through my, and I would, I would challenge anyone to say that this has been good for our children, for the social part of it. I think we're going to pay a high behavioral tax based on this later on.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the question.
All right, sir. Question has been called for. Roll call vote, please, ma'am, you're either, you're voting either in favor of option one, if you vote yes, if you vote no, you're not in favor of option one, right? Is that what I understand correctly? All right, okay. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Mr. Ballard?
Nay.
Ms. Barton?
Yes.
Ms. Goff?
Nay.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yea.
Mr. Settles?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Five yea- yeses and two nos.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. That is the process that we will have through summer school. We will address the fall time later on.
Yes, sir.
Right, okay, all right. Thank you, Dr. Duke, appreciate that very much. All right, next item on the agenda?
All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of a cooperating purchasing resolution. Board Policy 2.805 allows the board to join cooperative purchasing agreements with other school systems in order to take advantage of lower prices for bulk purchasing and to reduce the costs involved in bidding for the benefit of the system. Under the law, an LEA may participate in a master agreement by adopting a resolution accepting the terms of the agreement. Previously, the board has adopted a resolution accepting the terms to join the National Joint Powers Alliance. Since that time, the National Joint Powers Alignment, Alliance has changed its name to Sourcewell. So we are presenting this updated resolution for approval, so that Murfreesboro City Schools can take advantage of Sourcewell to procure a new special education bus and any additional futures. Purchases, I'm sorry.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion, your chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Goff, we have a second.
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, any question or discussion? Mr. Settles?
Discussion, a question. We previously were in an agreement with them already, correct?
That is correct.
So this isn't like new? The only thing that's changed is the name of the company, am I right?
Correct.
All right, thank you. And the purpose of it is to save money, correct?
That is correct.
All right, let's get this on with.
And any other question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next item.
Okay, we are now seeking the approval of the purchase of a special ed bus off of the Sourcewell agreement. So, we are recommending approval to purchase a new special education bus off of that agreement. The cost of the bus is $119,991, and was included in our ESR 2.0 budget that has been previously approved by the board.
Is this a new bus?
Yes, sir, it is a new bus.
Okay.
It is for, it is for growth areas for our district.
I move that we purchase the bus.
Thank you, Ms. Barton, we have a second.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next item, Dr. Duke, you're doing well.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Ms. Williams to come up for budget amendments, please.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. We have four budget amendments before you tonight. The first two are budget amendments within their respective funds, Cafeteria Fund and ESP. These are, it's no new dollars, it's moving money around in the same fund to recognize the, the revenue in the correct account. When the budget was created about a year ago at this time, we, there's new information on the revenue side that we now have in front of us, so this is to, the first two are to approve of, it's pretty much a cleanup amendment. The third amendment is to recognize some additional grant money for the, the bridge, summer learning bridge grant, it's in the amount of $233,000, and this brings us to a total of just over $1.8 million in the summer learning camps, collective grants. And the final one is, again, it's a, it's a state grant award for transportation for summer school, it's $304,000. That covers the cost of our bus drivers, bus assistance, and the matching benefits in addition to fuel cost. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions on the budget amendments? No question, we have a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Richardson, thank you, Mr. Settles, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, very much. Reports and information?
Yes, sir. I do have one bit of information for you tonight regarding the budget. First of all, as you are aware, our city council did pass our budget, so we're appreciative of that final hurdle for us to go through in the budget process. However, I did want to specifically speak with you about the principal pay scale for the 2021-2022 school year. The budgeted amount for the principal salaries in the approved 2021-2022 budget covered two adjustments. The first was the proposed 3% raise given to all employees, and the second was adjustments in what the district had passed considered as administrative experience. So under the current pay scale, MCS does not recognize service as an assistant principal when determining where a principal falls on the principal pay scale. This means that a new principal would start at zero years of administrative experience on the principal pay scale, regardless of the length of time they served as an assistant principal. This process has caused some concerns, specifically for long-term assistant principals, who may receive a minimal pay increase when they move to an administrative position that requires both a significant increase in responsibilities, as in, as well as an increase in the number of days worked. In addition, our job description actually gives preference to administrators with that assistant principal experience. So the approved budget included these two adjustments that would begin counting every year as an assistant principal as a half year of experience on the principal pay scale. This means that if an assistant principal served in a role, that role for two years, instead of starting on line zero in the principal pay scale, they would start on line one. This adjustment, we believe, allows for a truer reflection of the work done by both the principal and the assistant principal, while taking steps to ensure our administrative pay remains competitive. Although this amount was included in the budget that was approved by the board on May 11th, the actual pay scale was inadvertently left out of your budget notebooks. This change is going to be applied to all principals, and it does not impact the amount budgeted for principal salaries for the 2122 school year. So this is really just to let, make sure the board was aware of this change, since it was left out of the notebook, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have regarding that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Richardson?
Dr. Duke, would it be fair to say that this is recognizing and rewarding the experience and leadership administration and level of responsibility?
Yes, sir, that is the intent.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I think it's, it's a very good step.
Mr. Chairman?
Well deserved for our assistant principals.
There's no further discussion, I move that we adopt and approve that.
All right, sir, we have a motion to approve, have a second.
Just information, there's no need.
Then I just want to personally say aye. Appreciate it.
Okay.
I second your approval.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, personnel report?
Okay, you have the personnel report in front of you, and Mr. Ringstaff is available for any questions, should you need them, should you have them.
Any questions on the personnel report? We need to find something to ask, Ralph.
Not a lot of resignations, that's good.
All right, next item?
Our next item is Mr. Marlin, who'll be presenting your enrollment report.
I'm sorry, I couldn't tell you what it was, because my screen went blank.
That's okay.
Welcome, Mr. Marlin.
Thank you, good evening, board. I want to share with you the numbers from the eighth period, eighth enrollment period that ended on May the 5th, and on the first sheet, your PTR sheet, as, as normally states, just breaks down the pupil teacher ratio, you'll see that those numbers are, haven't changed much, because our enrollment only went up, we'll see on the next page, only went up a small amount, so those numbers didn't change very much from the previous enrollment, and we're in good standing for all those pupil teacher ratios. On the second page regarding enrollment, you'll see that our total enrollment for the eighth period was 9,016 students. That, if you look over on the right-hand side of that page, that means we are only down 242 students from our beginning, or the end of the year for 2019 and 20, so that number you'll remember has been much higher throughout the year, so that number has changed. I did look back, just to see, just so you would know, at the, at the end of the first period, we had 8,807 students, so we actually increased from the beginning of the school year to now to about 209 students. So, we're still behind, but we have shown growth. On the third page, your truancy report for this time period, we have 565 students, so that number continues to increase. I will say, give a caveat about those numbers. As we look at all that throughout this year, we know that we've had some issues with students who are quarantined, we're trying to clear all those up and make sure those numbers, and that they were, they were recorded properly, so we have lots of issues like that, that this year was brought about just because of the, the conditions of the school year. That number seems high, and we'll look at that next year, and that's the number that we'll, we'll focus on as we hopefully get back to some level of normalcy. And the last page is our chronic absenteeism report, the number of students at the end of the eighth period who are chronically absent, and let me remind you, because I know this is confusing, chronically absent includes excused absences and unexcused absences. It's a measure for us to, it has, doesn't have any legal standing, as far as we won't take anyone to juvenile court over those numbers, or ask any, you know, any parents to be, to, to be in juvenile court, but we, it is a number that helps us realize how many students have missed a large number of days. And so that calculation, if you look across the top of that chart, at the end of the, at the eighth period, we had, we had been in school 160 days, so students had 160 opportunities to be present. If they had missed more than 16 days, that meant that they had missed more than 10%, and that's what this number reflects. And as we talked about at the beginning of the school year, when we started looking at these numbers, this number has declined each period, almost every period, from about the fourth period on, and that's what we predicted, and that's what we know is normal, but still, the main point of, of this form is to let us know that 571 students missed an unusually large number of days. And when we indicate here that it's 16 plus, it could be large, a number much larger than 16, and we have some of those cases, and that's the students that we really want to pay attention to when we look at this list. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Moore?
Just looking at the final tally for both the truancy and the chronic absenteeism, you know, the numbers are very close, so would it, would the difference that there are six more chronic absentee students mean that there were six students who had some un, some excused absences that were in fact?
It's really a coincidence, because that number, there's not a correlation there, because the chronic absenteeism includes unexcused and unexcused, where truancy is only unexcused absences, and the number that we're looking at there for unexcused absences for truancy, it would be 10, that's, that's the benchmark, anything over 10, that's when we recognize students.
And the other was 16, that's right, okay. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Marlin? Thanks, sir, appreciate that report. April revenue and expenditure report?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
So, as of the end of April of, of this fiscal year, under the financial head, highlights, not headlights, there are no new changes. Well, one change from last month, we do have the Discovery School walking track, we included that in the last bullet, that the city council has approved that resolution, and not only that, they've actually cut a check to us, and that money, I'll be happy to report, is now in the possession of the Discovery School to pay towards their track. So there are no additional changes in the expenditures, so when I look at the year-to-date revenue comparison, it looks comparable to last month for both the revenue and the expenditures, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Kind of had a boring report tonight, huh?
Pardon?
Kind of had a boring one tonight.
Yes. I'll have to spruce it up next time.
Perfect, I love it.
At least don't. Mr. Chairman, again, if, if I may.
You may.
I just want to thank the city council for their cooperation and leadership there, it means so very much to us, and it's going to mean so much to the community, as well as the Discovery School, so thank you to the city council.
Absolutely.
And thank you. Councilman Shacklet, who's your, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I don't know whether you've been by Discovery School or not, but the asphalt is down, the track is done. I know that one day last week when I was over there, Ms. Maddox was a little concerned, but the asphalt got put down, and the track really looks good. In fact, I went by today, and there were students outside on the track, so it's good.
Beautiful.
Very well done. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, director's update?
Just a couple of updates for you tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Campbell. It's fitting, as today is the final full day of school for the year, as you are aware, so tomorrow is our final day, with a half day for students, and Ms. Arnett and her team will kick off summer school on June 2nd, so we get a week reprieve before we start back at it with summer school. I just want to give a special thank you to her team, they spent the afternoon loading a whole lot of materials into teachers' cars, so we're really excited about the curriculum our kids are going to be using, and her team spent all afternoon, teachers pulling up, and it was like Christmas, we were putting things in their cars, so that training will start. I also want to say, our summer feeding program will look a little different this year, we are some, we are doing our summer feeding at all of our summer school sites, and so we have like about 2,000 students, of course, right under that, so summer feeding will happen there. In addition, we will have one of our buses running to seven locations, providing food on Tuesday for the week, so in addition to our summer school locations, we still will have a bus running to seven locations, in addition to, we'll be feeding at McFadden and Patterson Park as well.